Call the zoning board of appeals, meeting to order at 7:01, and then ask for, I'm gonna do a short recess. We'll be back. All right, I'll call the Board of Zoning Appeals, meeting back to order at 7:10. The first item on the agenda is the third item, and we need to take that off the table, 170 Orin Oak Lane. Entertain a motion to take it off the table.
Motion, take it off the table.
By Mr. Forrester, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, who's doing the Orin Oak Lane presentations? Okay, just state your name, address for the record.
Yes, I'm Attorney Stephen Bellis. I work for the Pellegrino Law Firm in New Haven, Connecticut, at 475 Whitney Avenue. Good evening, I'm not gonna be too long, but I want to tell you that I represent the owner of the property, which is named Bluebird Prestige, Inc., and that's the owner of the property at 170 Orin Oak Lane. I'm just gonna give you a little bit of history, and then I have one witness that won't take very long at all. So, this goes back to a petition that was filed at the time by the applicant who owned the property, was Unique Way, Inc., and that application was for a planning and zoning approval of, we'll call it, 11 condominium units on the property. That was back in 2012, and that application was made as an age-restricted application, meaning 55 and older. That application was approved at some time in 2012, and then a year later, in 2013, Unique Way made the exact same application. Everything was the same, same property, 11 condominium units, except this time, it was not age-restricted, it was fair market value, just regular, no age-restricted. That got approved, and the approval letter was March 21st, 2013. After the approval letter, there was, the town gave, recorded the special case approval on the land records, and you'll see that's one of the exhibits, and no one disputes that. In your zoning, at first, there was, in your zoning regulations as to special case, it said you had to get final plans within six months. So Nick Owen, who's gonna be our witness on behalf of then Unique Way, asked for an extension of time to find those final plans. He'll explain that to you in a minute. After those final plans were obtained, he then asked, later in 2016, for a extension on the 18-month to get a building permit, to start construction. Again, under your special case, there's a section, I think it's 20.3 of the special case, and it basically says, you have to, you have to either start construction within 18 months after getting a special case approval, or you can ask for an extension of time. So there was an extension of time in 2016, and that was granted, now, I guess it was by Jay. Then there was another application for an extension, and that was granted to 2019. And then, at the last, at the very last thing that was done was, we tried to get the building permit, and we then went to the building department, and they said, "You need a certificate of zoning compliance, go get that, and then you can get your building permit." At that time, I think that that was denied, and there were some reasons given as to why it was denied. And, so that was denied, let me see if I can get you a date, May 23rd, 2019, by Jay. And it was addressed to Nick Owen. And the reasons it was denied, there were three reasons that Jay gave. It was, it says there was some testimony about new wetlands, and I'll address that in a second. The second was that the, hey, you waited six years, you know, enough's enough, that kind of excuse. And the third was, you didn't submit your final plans. So let me take you through those three things real quickly, and then I'll tell you, and then I'll be almost up to the current. So first, as far as wetlands, if there's any significant change with wetlands, only a wetlands commission can decide that, not the Planning and Zoning Commission, not the ZBA. So that is legitimate for a wetlands hearing, but it's not legitimate, I mean, it's legitimate for a wetlands commission, but not for a zoning commission. Number two, he, Jay says, "Well, why don't you just resubmit a new application, you know, you've waited this long, just file a new one." Well, we can't, the owner can't. And the reason they can't is Stratford changed its zoning regulations and removed that multifamily, allowing 11 condominiums on the property. So we could not go back and ask for another, submit a new application, the regulation is no longer applicable. And then the third thing was that we didn't submit final plans, and I have Nick here to testify, that the final plans were found in the wrong file. It was in the, what we called, what I called or told you was the age-restricted file, not in the file that was submitted a year later. So, they were, they were done, but they were just weren't done, they weren't in the right file. So, after Jay issued his letter, I filed a lawsuit with the court, it's called a mandamus action, and I asked the court to order that the building department issue the building permit, and the judge wrote a decision, and he said, "Steve," well, he didn't say Steve, but, you know, I'm paraphrasing, "Attorney Bellis, why don't you go back to the ZBA and see how they rule, because they have jurisdiction over the actions of Jay Hibansky acting as the zoning officer." So, we then had, that lawsuit was put on hold, Nick came back and filed an application with, with this commission, on behalf of Bluebird, the current owner, and so we're asking the zoning board of appeals to rule that we can go ahead and Jay can issue a certificate of zoning compliance, and that then the building inspector could issue his building permit. So that's why we're before you this evening, and I know it sounds a little confusing, and it's been a long time, but I don't, I don't know if you all have what I have in front of me, which is the application. Do you guys have that? Is that something that everyone has? Okay, thank you. So, if you look at the application, there's different letters, and I can just walk you through a couple of them. So you'll see, I don't know if it's in the same order I have, you'll see the March 21st, 2013, letter giving the approval. You'll see the next document is the land records recording. Then you'll see the first request on August 21st, 2013, to Nick Owen, looking for the final plans, that was granted. Then Nick will testify after I finish this little summation. Then you'll see a letter, September 14th, 2016, and you'll see now, it says, okay, we want an 18-month, we want an extension for the 18-month, and you'll see it is, the new deadline is to obtain a building permit, and it's no longer looking for final plans, 'cause presumably now they have them. Then you'll see another letter where it was granted, that request. There was another request in January 9th, 2018, on the 18 months to pull a building permit, that was approved. And flipping through, oh, I guess in, along the way, it doesn't really much matter, we got the zoning commission to remove a $50,000 bond for landscaping, you're not allowed to do a bond for landscaping, so the commission approved that. That's in there, I'm not really sure why. Then there's a request, and you'll see the denial, May 23rd, 2019, again, that was the 18, you know, looking to pull the building permit, and that's the letter that Jay wrote to Nick Owen, denying it. So that's what we're going on, off of that, and the three reasons are cited. So, with that, I don't know how you want to do this, I'm only gonna ask Mr. Owen a couple questions, I don't know where you'd like him to sit, Chairman?
Wherever Mr. Owens feels comfortable.
I can have him stand next to me, and we can share the mic, if that's okay with the commission. Yes, sir?
I'm comfortable in the back area.
Uh-oh, alright. So why don't you just state your name?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Zoning Appeals, my name is Nicholas Owen, I'm one of the representatives for the owner on this particular piece of property, 170 Orin Oak Lane.
And Mr. Owen, did you represent or help Unique Way in 2012 get an application for this project?
I did.
And what did you do?
I researched the land records, we hired a architect and an engineer, and we developed a schematic, which ultimately showed 11 individual lots in a condominium-style community, and submitted the application along with the plans to the zoning office.
I'm gonna get the plans if I can. Was that back in April of 2012?
It was.
Okay. I have a copy of a transmittal from an engineer's office, where they had 23 sets, I guess Stratford likes a lot of sets, of plans, I'm not giving you 23 sets, don't worry, and I want to show you these plans. Were these the plans that were submitted in the 2012 application?
Yes.
Okay. And what kind of application was that for?
This was for, for the zoning commission to approve the individual project for the 11 units as requested.
Was it age-restricted?
Initially, it was an age-restricted community.
Okay. Then in 2013, did you come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I did, I came back before the zoning commission and asked them to remove the age restriction on this project, and I think previous to that, what I had asked, if they could just remove the age restriction from the initial application that was approved for age restriction. And the reason why I asked that is because, simply put, the plans that were approved for age-restricted are exactly, with no deviations, the same plans that were submitted for the market rate project, excluding the age restriction.
And was that submitted in 2013?
Yes, it was.
Okay. I'll just submit these plans, he's the closest gentleman, I'd say okay to hand it to him. After that plan was, the 2013 application was submitted, was that approved?
Yes, it was.
Okay. And did you ask for an extension of time after that 2013 approval, to find the final plans?
Yes.
And where were the final plans?
They were ultimately discovered in one of the files in the zoning office.
And was it in the proper file?
No, it was not.
It was not in the 2013 application file?
It was not.
And so where was it found?
It was in the age-restricted file.
And who, and who found it from this office, the zoning enforcement office?
That's, that's a good question, and I've gotta go into this a little bit, and Jay may agree or disagree with me, but Jay and I reviewed both of those files on numerous occasions.
I'm talking about in 2013?
Oh, I'm sorry. It was, there was one sheet of the final plans which depicted all of the requirements under the regulation to have approval for the final plans, and it was in the file.
Was that Gary Lawrenson?
Gary Lawrenson, at the time, was in transition of leaving, and actually, Mr. Hibansky, one of his first hearings was on this petition in an administrative session, asking for an extension of the approvals.
Okay. And was that extension, yeah?
Which was granted. And it was granted.
Okay. And then was, once the plans were found, did you make another request to extend the 18 months to get a building permit?
Yes.
How many times did you do that? A couple?
At least two or three times.
Okay. And the last time you did it, did Mr. Hibansky deny that application?
Yes, he did.
Okay. And one of the reasons for denial was not finding the final plans, is that no longer a problem?
I don't think it was a problem, period, because the final plans were in the file.
Okay. And all the other requests that were granted had to do with extensions of time for getting a building permit?
Specifically, yes.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all I have, unless, I can sum up a little more, unless, unless any of you have a question.
Commissioners, have any questions?
Alright, you can sit down, I'll finish up. So, so what we're asking is that, that the zoning board of appeal, you have authority to tell the zoning enforcement administrator, in this case Jay, that he can go ahead and ask, he can go ahead and sign a certificate of zoning compliance, saying that they have the special permit, in this town, it's called a special case, they have an approval for the 11 units, they have an approval, they've had extensions of time to pull a building permit, and based on the status right now, that they can go ahead and get their, get their building permit. But, we need your, we need this board, according to the judge, to tell Mr. Hibansky that that's okay with you people. And then Jay will issue the certificate of zoning appliance, if that's your decision, and then we would go get our building permit from the building department. So, I know that was really a long-winded way of getting to what we need, but I think you needed to hear the background, and especially now that we can't start over, because there is no zoning regulation that would allow these 11 condominium units at the current time, it's just not in your book any longer. So, we kinda have to stay on track for what was already approved. That's my pitch.
Thank you. Once again, commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Forrester?
So it's our understanding, or it's your position, that the final plans were actually misfiled in the town office?
Yeah, apparently there, it wasn't in the 2013 application, it wasn't in the 2013 file, and I think as Mr. Owen said, there was a transition going on between Mr. Gary Lawrenson and Jay, and I'm not sure, in your town, whether they keep all these 23 sets of plans, I think very often, after you get an approval, the plans could get, could get tossed out.
Thank you.
And they probably did in this case, yeah. It would be a lot of paperwork to keep, yeah.
Any other commissioners with questions? Hearing none, does that wrap up your presentation?
It does, sir.
Are there any people in the audience who wish to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak in opposition of this petition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning and Zoning, Board of Zoning Appeals, my name's Kevin Kelly, I'm here on behalf of the town attorney's office to speak for Mr. Jay Hibansky, the zoning enforcement officer in this case. You heard a lot of speculation with regards to whether or not there were actually plans presented. The facts are that on May 22nd, 2019, the request for an extension was denied by the zoning commission. Since 20, May 22nd of 2019, we haven't heard anything about these lost plans until tonight. In fact, they had from May 22nd, 2019, until August 19th of 2019, five months, in which, three months, in which to come forward with these plans, or to notify the zoning office that these plans had been submitted, that never happened. Instead, there were two appeals taken, one from the zoning denial, and one a mandamus. Interesting, the zoning denial was upheld by the Superior Court, that the zoning commission acted properly when it denied the applicant's request. So I believe that Jay Hibansky, in this case, acted properly, for a number of reasons. First and foremost, he has the authority, under the zoning regulations, Section 22, to issue such denials, and he was acting in accordance with an appropriate denial made by the zoning commission, and you can refer to Bluebird Prestige, Inc. versus Stratford Zoning Commission, Superior Court Docket Number CV 19-6087046S, that was issued March 17th of 2020 by Judge Radcliffe. No appeal was taken from that case. Our zoning regulations allow the zoning commission, when they issue these denials, to condition the permit, and in this case, it conditioned it with a requirement to file final plans. Final plans were never filed, and therefore, the property reverted back to what it was prior. You will also see in the applicant's request, a citation to International Investors versus the Town of Fairfield Zoning Commission, and he gives you the Superior Court case, but fails to give you the appeal therefrom, which was decided in February of this year, which overturned that court, and said that the court, that the commissions could condition special case permits, and in this case, revert back to its prior use, so it does not necessarily run with the land. We believe the case is fairly clear, is very clear. Jay Hibansky operated within the scope of his office, he had the authority to do so, there was a proper denial by the zoning commission that was appealed to the Superior Court and The fact that we're hearing about this final plan that was or wasn't submitted, I think is a red herring, and distracts from what is actually the facts of the case, and the applicant still, between May 22nd of 2019 and August 19th of 2019, could have presented those plans, knowing what the town was going to do. Given the fact that he claims he had them and submitted them, why didn't he do that? That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Questions, commissioners? Mr. Kelly, Attorney Kelly. No questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to petition?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Joe Cubic, I'm a lawyer in Milford, Connecticut, and I represent Butters, Alexandra Lewis, David Bayless, and the Concerned Citizens Group of Stratford. I'm not gonna go into all the other information you've already received, I read Attorney Florick's memo, I concur with it, and I concur with Attorney Kelly's statements. Just a little bit more information about the property, there is a contract by Bluebird Prestige to sell the property, or at least a portion of the property, and I've got three sets of the agreement of purchase and sale, but, thank you. And by the way, welcome to this scenario, this situation. Now, the zoning commission's been through it many times with the same players, it's, I guess it's about time you guys got involved. Also is two maps showing the property, subject property, 170 Orin Oak Lane, highlighted in yellow, and there's a big X in one of the parts of 170 Orin Oak Lane, that's purchase and sales agreement that Mr. Forrester has before him, is to sell the part of 170 Orin Oak Lane by Bluebird Prestige, the part with the X in it, to be sold by Bluebird Prestige to a company by the name of Rogalus LLC. And I say same cast of characters, same lawyers, same engineers, just about same everything. So Rogalus LLC is the, is the proposed buyer of this property, and it's a different project, it's already been before the zoning commission, it's currently pending in litigation in Superior Court, and I've got a few copies of the Superior Court case lookup, the docket sheet, you'll see the status of the litigation. So, it sounds like Bluebird Prestige, the current property owner, wants to sell most of the property to Mr. Rogalus, I don't know what that does to the 10, 10 or 11-unit project, but it seems as if it creates, I'm almost a mootness here now, on what they're seeking. I've also got the tax card from the tax assessor's office, it shows that Unique Way LLC, the petitioner, transferred title to the property to Jack Dempsey's, Inc., in April 7th, on April 17th, 2015, or at least that's when it was recorded. So, following 2015, Unique Way did petition this, the zoning commission for approvals in 2013, but in 2015, it no longer held title to the property. From 2015 to 2017, a company by the name of Jack Dempsey's, Jack Dempsey's, Inc. owned the property. What's curious, in your package, that the petitioner, applicant has, or the appellant has submitted, in 2016, acting on, the request for an extension of time is signed, and the person is acting on behalf of the petitioner, I guess the petitioner being Unique Way, not clear. On June 3rd, 2019, Unique Way, a person acting on behalf of Unique Way asks for an extension of time. Unique Way hasn't had anything to do with this property in six, in six, over six years now, at this point. So, certainly the proper applicant, and Jack Dempsey's broke, was in between Unique Way and, and Bluebird Prestige. It, to me, it doesn't seem as if the person acting on behalf of Unique Way had anything to do with this property whatsoever, a property that's gonna propose to be sold to Rogalus LLC. There's also, and I know this is outside of inland wetlands, but this is three copies of the water, the, the report identifying wetlands on a property that is adjacent, the firehouse property, adjacent to, adjacent to 170 Orin Oak Lane. So there was a basis for the zoning commission to consider the wetlands issue next door. So on behalf of my clients, we, we believe that based upon the procedural nature of this, any, essentially even the mootness of this at this point, that the, the appeal should be dismissed, and Mr. Hibansky's decision upheld. Thank you.
Hearing none?
Thank you.
Anyone else here wish to speak in opposition to petition? Hearing none, accept a motion to close the petition.
Motion to close the public hearing on this petition.
Should I respond to this? Oh, sure. It'll take me one second.
Motion withdrawn.
Again, for the record, I'm Attorney Stephen Bellis, and this would be a short rebuttal to the, to the two comments. First, as far as a contract to sell the property, it's kind of irrelevant, that contract is contingent upon certain kinds of zoning approvals, and it hasn't happened. So the owner of the property is still Bluebird Prestige, Inc. Secondly, as far as the, the reason you don't see the final plans being brought up any longer, is that it's no longer an issue, because if you look at the letter of September 14th, 2016, from Jay Hibansky, he says, "Your request for the 18-month extension to obtain a building per, permit is, is approved." And then you look at the letter from January 27th, 2016, from the David Fuller, he's the chairman of the zoning commission, he said, "We voted to grant an 18-month extension of time, retroactive, to March 19th, 2015, to obtain a building permit." No one's talking about final plans anymore, that's water over the dam. So the only thing that was in issue was asking an extension of time to pull the building permit, and I just wanted to rebut those two, two things that, and the wetlands, I already told you, has nothing to do with this commission or zoning commission, so those would be my comments, that the comments were not applicable that were raised by both Attorney Kelly or an attorney Cubic. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, any questions? Hearing none, now, accept a motion.
Motion to close the public hearing on 170 Orin Oak.
Second, any discussion? All is okay, it's a private session.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman? May I speak with you privately before we?
Well placed.
Yes, just for a moment. Thank you.
Certainly. 1225 Wells Place, the petition of Patricia A. Naylor and John R. Cottrell, seeking the site plan review in variances of Section 4.2, to expand the maximum building coverage from 23.3% to 27.2%, and Section 3.111 of the required three-foot side yard setback to...
to 1.8 feet and 1.6 feet to construct a newly detached two-car garage in an RS4 zone. Hardship listed is the, it's a corner lot with undersized property.
Thank you. Petitioners present? Just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Pat Naylor. I'm here with my husband, John Cotrell, and we live at 1225 Wells Place. We've lived there for 37 years. So we're the owners, and we're also the petitioners for this variance. You have our application and staff comments. I would just like to add a few other things if I could. Basically, we're looking to replace a 1920's garage that served its purpose, not too well for us, because we've never really been able to use it as a garage. As we get older, we'd like to be able to stay on the property, and so, you know, the idea is to keep the garage where it is, but to extend it eight feet to the left and five feet out. I will say, I know you guys do this all the time, but it seemed like a foreign language to us, and when we started this project a year ago, we didn't really fully understand that we needed a variance. If you look at the properties around us, we have, we're on a corner lot, we have a lot, it seemed like we had a lot of property, and we understood that we were in a 7,500 square feet zone, and 25% could be building coverage. So we did reach out to Paul Reslink, who is an architect that had done our addition many years ago, I'm sure you guys have worked with him, and we asked him to help us design this garage that would be fitting with the neighborhood, so it looks like it would belong. And so, you know, we've been very, very sensitive to the fact that, you know, we want to fit in, we don't want it to look like it was just plopped in there, but that is sort of fits in. But a couple of other things I wanted to point out to you, if you, I did include pictures. The front of our property, the house faces Wells Place, but the garage faces Sherwood Avenue. This project would keep everything the same. Our hope is to build the garage where it is currently. We'd like to keep the existing setbacks. There is not a lot of property there. But I wanted to point out that the garage, so the, behind the garage, there's a chain link fence, and there's shrubs that have been there the entire time. So it doesn't affect anything there, adjusting that property line. And on the side between our neighbors, yes, it's true, as we come out five feet, our boundary line does diminish a little bit, so it doesn't go with your new zoning regulations of three feet, but the view from the road looks exactly, you know, would keep the look. Like, it wouldn't really be that noticeable. I mean, it would be coming over towards the house. We're concerned as if we have to adjust that, that it gets a little closer to the house, and that it would also affect our steps there. We would really like to be able to keep the boundary where it is now, and go over the eight feet and out the five feet. I also just want to point out that we did speak to all the neighbors that we were required to notify, that their support, if we had to notify, I think there were 10 neighbors because of where we are in the corner lot. And particularly, the neighbors on either side aren't, they're not concerned, because one feels she'll have more privacy for a pool, and again, the other neighbor, it doesn't affect anything, because he has a two-car garage right there. Six of the 10 neighbors that we notified already have two-car garages and seem to have less property than we do. So I think those are the main points that I wanted to make. I hope that you will review this application favorably, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
The Commissioners, any questions? Hearing none, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Is anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Entertained a motion to close the petition.
Motion to close.
All right, Mr. Forrester?
Second.
Second by Ms. Streets, any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Petition closed.
One-third av, petition of Laura A. and Thomas Tesaro, seeking a site plan review in variances of Section 4.2 regarding the side yard setback from 9.5 to, 9.5 feet to 6.2 feet, the rear yard setback from 21.7 feet to 13 feet, and the overall building coverage from 26.4% to 35% to construct a raised deck off the rear of the home in a RS4 zone. Hardship, configuration of the property combined with small lot size.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Jason Marsh. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Green and Sklar's, 1 Audubon Street, New Haven, and I'm here representing Laura Tesoro and her father, Tom Tesoro. You have our application, it is, speaks for itself, it's relatively straightforward. This is a lot that is incredibly small in size in comparison to those neighboring. My clients wish to construct a modest deck off the rear of the property and request the variances to do so, given the hardship. They have submitted the notices to the Butters, and in response to one neighbor who has concerns about the height of the deck, my clients are amenable to lowering the height to accommodate that neighbor's concerns, so unless, again, it's, the staff comments from the 24th kind of speak for themselves, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions from Commissioners?
Questions from Commissioners. Hearing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Hearing none, entertain a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Mr. Forrester? Is there a second? Second, Ms. Streets, discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Fisher Court, Ms. Streets, would you read that into the record?
Petition of Donna Gary and Donna Byington, seeking a site plan review in variance of Section 14.2 for the expansion of a non-conforming structure for the enclosure and conversion of the existing front porch into a mudroom. The hardship being that a co-op is a legal non-conforming parcel, where all modifications require a variance.
Thank you.
I'm Gary Byington, F.I. Fisher Court. It's just basically-
Self-explanatory is what you're going to say?
I'm sorry.
I guess you're going to say it's self-explanatory.
So, pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah. Have any questions? I mean, it is the co-op, and I know they have to come before us all the time, so, anybody have any questions? Hearing none, anyone here wish to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, entertain a motion to close, Fisher Court?
Motion to close, F.I. Fisher Court.
Mr. Forrester? Is there a second? Second, Ms. Streets, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Petition is closed. Middlebrook Road, Ms. Dolan, would you like to give that a shot? Read it into the record? Just so you know, this is Mrs. Dolan's first hearing, and she's getting baptized.
The application, 208 Middlebrook Road, Petition of Alternatives, Inc., seeking a site plan review in variance of Section 4.2 regarding the maximum allowable building coverage from 20% to 21.9% to construct additions incidental to a group home in a RS3 zone.
Good evening, my name is Kelly Bragdon from Alternatives Incorporated, and I submitted this request for a variance.
Could you spell your last name, please?
Bragdon, B-R-A-G-D-O-N. I'm the executive director of Alternatives Incorporated. We own this property at 208 Middlebrook since 1995. It's been in operation as a three-bed community living arrangement, which is licensed by the Department of Developmental Services. We are wishing that the home is in need of a complete remodel, and that's our plan. And we started pulling the plans together. We've, there's not a lot of room and space inside the home, and we want to add one bedroom, a full, we're going to have two full roll-in shower baths, and we need a area to pass medications for the people who live there. So the application is for a variance in coverage of 1.9%, which is about 230 square feet.
That was nice, short and sweet. Questions, Commissioners, if any? Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, referring back to the Board of Zoning Appeals Planning Staff Review comments, one of the suggested inquiries is what alternatives were explored, such as reducing the size of the proposed addition slightly to bring it within conformity.
We certainly considered that. The addition that we have proposed, which is 24 by 36, is going to be the bedrooms for the home. We are increasing the bedroom size to four from three. The remainder of the home is going to be remodeled to accommodate those two full roll-in bathrooms, the med passing station. We also need an office location for that site, and a kitchen and common living area.
Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone wish to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, entertain a motion to close, Middlebrook Road.
Motion to close.
Mr. Forrester? Second by, the Streets? Oh, any discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Middlebrook Road is closed. Now entertain a motion to close the public portion.
Motion to close.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public portion's closed. Administrative session. Question. Let me look here quick. Can I entertain, would somebody make a motion to move Orin Oak Lane to the end, because I think the other petitions are going to go much quicker?
I'll make a motion to move 170 Orin Oak Lane to the end of the application.
Mr. Forrester, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms., second, Mr. Ticky, any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. So the first application would be Wells Place.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Forrester.
Motion to take 1225 Wells Place off the table.
Motion by Mr. Forrester, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Streets. Any, well, there's no discussion on that. What is your pleasure?
Don't we have to vote on a motion to take it off?
No, we didn't do that.
Didn't do that yet.
We did, didn't we?
Oh, okay, I missed that one. I apologize, I was reading the notes. I'll make a motion to-
That's okay, I'll forgive you.
I'll make a motion to approve citing the hardship of the undersized lot.
Is there a second?
I second.
Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Ms. Streets?
Yes.
Mr. Ticky?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, petition is granted. Pleasure on Third Avenue.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Forrester?
Motion to take 1/3 Avenue off the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Ticky? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Third Avenue is off the table.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Forrester?
Make a motion to approve the applicant of 1/3 Avenue citing the hardship based upon an undersized lot.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Streets, discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call, Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Ms. Streets?
Yes.
Mr. Ticky?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, petition is granted. Pleasure on Fisher Court?
Mr. Chairman? Motion to take F.I. Fisher Court off the table.
Motion by Mr. Forrester, is there a second? Second by Ms. Streets, discussion, no, wait a minute. All's in favor?
Aye.
Your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the application of F.I. Fisher Court citing the historical similar variances that have been considered within the cooperative developments in the area.
Motion by Mr. Forrester, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ticky, discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Forrester?
Aye.
Ms. Streets? Mr. Ticky?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, petition is granted. Middlebrook Road, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to take it off the table for discussion?
All right, motion for discussion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Streets, discussion on the motion, Mr. Forrester?
Yeah, discussion purposes. I mean, the ramp would be ADA compliant, which is automatically not counted towards building lot coverage. Don't think we're talking about an excessive increase in coverage per se over the cap of 20% to 21.9%. The design makes sense based upon the usage of the property. However, there does not appear to be an outstanding hardship that is not self-created by the proposed So I'm really not certain which way we should go on this one, and I look for some input from the other board members.
Where'd our attorney go? Does it, ADA compliant, oh, ADA compliance leads us to, in a good area, doesn't it?
Hey, Jay, do you recall what this is, sorry, this is Attorney Alexander Florrick, counsel of the ZBA. Do you recall exactly what the zoning regulations say on ADA compliance?
Yes, so, and essentially, I'm just going to be repeating what Commissioner Forrester said. If a access point to a home is ADA compliant, it doesn't count towards the setback or coverage requirement, allowing folks to be able to stay in their home longer periods of time and, you know, age in place. You know, I'll just add that, you know, I think this zoning Board of Appeals and previous have leaned on public safety and public health as a reason to grant. I haven't heard the need or the need to comply with ADA as a legal hardship, but I have heard public health and public safety, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That having been said, I'll make a motion to approve 208 Middlebrook based upon public safety and public health, particularly of the special needs residents that'll be occupying that dwelling.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Second. Second by Mr. Ticky, discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call, Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Ms. Streets?
Yes.
Mr.?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, petition granted. Okay, back up to Orin Oak Lane, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll take, I'll make a motion to take 170 Orin Oak Lane off the table for discussion purposes.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Ms. Streets, and remember, this is for discussion purposes, Mr. Forrester?
Through you to Mr. Hibansky. So it was presented to us this evening that a part of or a site plan was found incorrectly filed between an old application and a new application. Is that testimony accurate?
I would not say that that testimony is accurate.
Okay. Were you present and reviewed the files at the same time as the petitioner?
Yes, multiple times, I would say maybe four or five times.
So the document in question, which has not been provided, at least that I've seen, a copy of the document that was found in that file, is it stamped in any way, shape, or form?
I don't recall off the top of my head. I know, so the sequence that was discussed by the attorney was, in 2006 or 2007, there was an age-restricted development that was approved. Six, seven years had gone by, 2012, it was requested that this be converted to market, and the age restriction would now be lifted. As a part of that approval, final plans were required. Final plans were required to be submitted by the zoning commission as part of that approval. The plans that the applicant this evening is- The plans that the, the applicant this evening is claiming that were from, final plans from 2012 have the date 2007. So, unless those plans got in a time machine and went back to 2007, there's no way that those final plans were submitted unless someone forgot to change the date on a survey from 2012 to 2007. That's, that's the only explanation I can, I can give you. The plans were always in there. As far as I know, they were always in there, that, nothing was added. The applicant had four to five times looking at both the files and on the last time that we looked at them, I think they thought, well, these might be the ones, these might be the final plans. And I said, I don't, I don't agree with you, but, you know.
Has the board been provided with a copy of that document that was discovered in the file?
I have not provided a copy of that document, no.
Would it be possible to do so at a, at a future time?
Absolutely.
The timing of the plans having to be submitted, is that something that is standard within the statutes or is that something that's arbitrary, is determined by the town entity, be it the Board of, Board of Zoning Appeals, Zoning Commission, Planning Commission, whatever?
Well, I can speak on my own experience, so, I'm sorry.
I think, Gavin, what you're driving at is, I have some questions, too. You think it'd be our benefit to put it on a table till next month and request additional information?
Yeah, because my point being is that testimony was received this evening concerning a document. We have not been provided that document. So, it is on the record, the testimony was stated that a document was found in a file. So, I don't think it's above our authority to ask for confirmation of said document. Now, Mr. Abansky has indicated that he concurs with the plaintiff, from the standpoint, the applicant, I should say, from the standpoint that a document was found, there's a disagreement as to what that document is, but a document was placed into oral testimony in terms of its existence and all I'm asking for is an opportunity to look at this document that was put in testimony.
But it would have been the obligation of the applicant, this is Pat Sullivan, would have been the obligation of the applicant to put that document into the record because now the record is closed. So, if he wanted that record, if he wanted that document to be seen by the board, then he would have needed to share it with the board while he was making his presentation. So, that, that cannot be, the, the opportunity has to be for parties to go back and forth. So, if you were to take any information now, then the applicant would have to have the opportunity to rebut that. So, you can't take any more information once you've closed your public hearing.
Okay, that's fine. So, your statement was that the plaintiff has no standing. If the plaintiff has no standing, why are we here?
It's an excellent question.
Well, you are our attorney, so please enlighten me, why are we here?
I would say that if I'm, if I'm looking at this application, and obviously this is, you know, for you to discuss, but this application says, please accept this request, this is from petition of Unique Way Inc. Now, Mr. Owen got up and said that he was representing the owner. Attorney Bellis then got up and said that the owner was Bluebird Prestige. If you look at the attachments to the application, they include an appeal where Attorney Bellis has made a representation that Bluebird Prestige is the owner of the property and he has done that in a number of litigations. So, Unique Way then comes in as an applicant and Attorney Cubic raises that issue, what is, what is Unique Way with regard to this property because they no longer have any ownership interest in it? That was unrefuted by, when the applicant got back up to rebut, they made no representations as to Unique Way or what Unique Way's, you know, relationship was to the property. So, if you read through the appeal, it says, please find the, you know, that, that they're looking for, please find the attached documents and exhibits that are appropriate in an effort to request the Board of Zoning Appeals to overturn the zoning commission's denial for the building permit.
I understand that, but I think my question really goes back to, is it standard practice in the state of Connecticut for land use boards to accept petitions or applications from non-property owners?
No.
So, why did we have it on our agenda?
Well, I, I think there, and, you know, there's a, there's a sense of trust when someone files an application and the presumption is that they're making representations that are truthful. So, the presumption would be that Unique Way Inc. had the right to file this petition and that's how it came before the board.
Despite the fact that our, evidently our tax assessor records don't agree with that.
Correct.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, there's an awful lot here. I'd, I'd make a motion to table.
Motion to table by Mr. Forrester, is there a second? I can sec, I'll second it. I can second it under our bylaws. All is in favor of tabling, it's signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tabled. All right, campsite plan review.
Mr. Chairman, I think the approval of minutes is prior to that.
Oh, I forgot about that.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of May 17.
Motion by Mr. Forrester, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Dolan, we've got to get her name in the minutes here. Any changes or modifications? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now for camps, campsite review.
Nothing new, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Members' concerns, comments?
Mr. Chairman? It's Mr. Forrester, way over here.
Oh, I was, it sounded like you were over there.
He has plexiglass.
You know what it is, the reflection, you have to like-
Well, I know, I know, I have to do it. I, I just want to say how wonderful it is for this board to actually be in person again, you know, since COVID is, is hopefully coming to an end and being resolved. It, it's nice for us to get together prior to our, our members whose terms are about to expire leaving, so we have an opportunity to see one another once again, so. I am, quite frankly. Anytime you have three lawyers in a room, make it four lawyers in a room, and you can get out in less than an hour, you've done something very good, Mr. Chairman.
Any members' concerns, comments? Any other items? Hearing none, can motion be adjourned? So moved. Forrester? Second by the Streets? All is in favor?
Aye.